Hi, I'm Rasha Goel.
And I'm Gil Reyes. Welcome to Latitude, the here and now of business and trade news from the Port of Los Angeles.
In this edition, you'll get a front row seat to the Supply Chain Optimization Forum, where the Port of Los Angeles and Long Beach tackle supply chain congestion issues and work together to get cargo flowing at optimum speeds. Let's get started exploring this edition of Latitude. Maritime history was made today at the San Pedro Bay Port Complex. The Ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach held a joint forum to discuss how they can work together to enhance cargo velocity and efficiency throughout the supply chain.
The Supply Chain Optimization Forum was the second to be held under the recently expanded Federal Maritime Commission Agreement. The agreement's expansion now allows the two ports to cooperate far more strategically in resolving congestion and cargo delays. The purpose of the Supply Chain Optimization Forum was to develop a framework in which the ports can cooperate and seek input from stakeholders. This innovative discussion was led by the executive directors of both ports, Gene Soroka and John Slangerup.
We have outlined pretty succinctly those causes that have created bottleneck strife and impacted the flow of cargo. Today, I hope what we can have is a constructive dialogue around those potential solutions and implementing certain ideas that we can move on very quickly and identifying those that would require further thought, discussion, and collaboration going down line.
It's, in many ways, a historic day for the ports to take another step forward in working together, addressing things local to our port complex and to our local economy and community.
The forum created a unique opportunity for all these stakeholders to share their honest opinions about current industry challenges and solutions.
Our terminals and our land space in the Port of LA and the Port of Long Beach cannot be used as storage yards, cannot be used as sorting at the hook or anywhere else, but must be transit facilities that containers move off within a 24-hour period.
The sorting of the cargo off the big ships, it's a complicated, expensive process to sort the boxes to get them in the right piles. But why can't the entire yard be, next box goes to next truck? Does the sorting have to happen on the terminals?
The Ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach are critical for the toy industry, with over 50% of toy imports coming in through these ports.
I think this is a critical first step in restoring confidence in the Ports of LA and Long Beach and bringing all the stakeholders together, from labor to BCOs, to the terminal operators, truckers, rail. We all need to sit down and be part of the conversation and figure out how to get this right.
As our industry began and have done so for over 65 years, the LA CBFFA, we pledged to continue to work with stakeholders to fully optimize the supply chain and forward freight through the San Pedro Bay Port.
We also support the recent improvements such as the interoperable chassis pool and the off-dock yards and support the further investigation of short-haul rail.
Freight is like water. It will find the path of least resistance. He says, "Let's work together to find less resistance." And that kind of wraps up our feeling here and what we want to accomplish together.
The implementation of certain strategies and tactics that we have right now have been met with pretty good confidence from the stakeholder community. We need to keep upping the bar on what we can do next.
The expanded FMC agreement has created a historic opportunity for all stakeholders to work together, think outside of the box, seek creative solutions, and move towards our common goal of optimizing cargo velocity and efficiency.
My name is Eric.
My name is May.
We are in Chinatown. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
In LA this week...
A program by the Department of Recreation and Parks encouraging more women to take up golf for networking opportunities and so much more. I'm Gil Reyes with a story next.
I'm Anna Marcos, a midnight stroll in Hollywood that brings care and services to the transgender community on the streets. That's coming up.
The LA Dodgers showing kids they don't need a big stadium like Dodger Stadium to play ball. Some tips for kids in the neighborhood. That's coming up. Hello and welcome to LA this week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay. LA's transgender community is taking care of its own on the streets of Hollywood with support of city leaders. Anna Marcos takes a midnight stroll with them to show us what it's all about.
This is our third midnight stroll.
They come in all shapes, sizes, races, and sexual identities. Some are members of the mayor's Transgender Advisory Council. Some are health and social services workers, or both. Tonight, this group of transgender activists hold hands before hitting the streets of Hollywood to give a little TLC to those in need, especially their transgender brothers and sisters.
These are my people, you know, especially the trans women and men of Los Angeles, California. These are my people. We shared, you know, each other's life experiences, our strengths and our hopes. So we want to continue that. I want to make sure that, you know, my legacy is that I'm providing a safe and affirming place.
Are you actually gonna walk for miles on these shoes, with these shoes?
Of course I would. I'm always all used to walking and even running on these shoes.
We met Kelly as the activists spread the word about their services at a 7-Eleven on Santa Monica Boulevard, a big hangout for trans people on the street. Our camera was definitely not welcome. Only Kelly agreed to talk to us.
Is there any help that you would like to get?
No, not really. There's nothing I can help with.
Kelly's pimp kept lurking around. The only time she smiled was when we asked about the little boombox she carries. The music keeps her company as she walks the streets.
I see that you have music.
Yeah, 'cause I like my music. It is, it keeps me, I like, I like, I love music. That's it.
Make you feel good?
Yeah.
The activists know this life. Many have lived it. And they don't give up as they hand out a little kindness along with orange bags filled with water, snacks, and information on their services.
We want them to be, feel like they've got refreshments. We want them to feel like they have someone that's there to care for them and to meet them where they're at. Many times, what you're gonna learn is that the story is one of rejection. It is one of being othered and being different and no one standing up for them.
I'm helping the trans community. Because when I was in my transition, you know, years ago in New York City, it was nothing of this exists, nothing. No support at all. I'm gonna be 61 years old, so you can make it. And I went through hell.
This is the third midnight stroll, and it's become a monthly event, started when members of the Transgender Advisory Council met with the LAPD and realized that there are no late-night services for trans people who are working the street, getting arrested, not knowing where to turn. So this event brings the services to them.
We are out here. We are visible. We are present and we are available.
But you don't even have to be a trans person to get help. Bill and his dog Boomer just got an appointment to apply for housing.
They came over to where I sleep, over there on Cowenga, and they're passing out flyers and water.
Along for the stroll, members of the LAPD, councilmember Mitchell Farrell's office, and even a neighborhood prosecutor, whose job is often to prosecute these people, but not tonight.
So I'm here to get out in the street and to see firsthand what some of our citizens deal with when they get involved in street prostitution. The goal of a prosecutor isn't just to prosecute. It's to do the right thing.
As the night drags on, the number of arrests grows. But a few who might have been casualties of the night have been able to get help, which keeps these midnight strollers coming back. They will be out here again next month. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
For more information and services for the transgender community, contact apaiteonline.org. Well, turning now to the Port of Los Angeles as it unveils its newest electric vehicle for cleaner air and reducing waste in landfills. Gil Reyes reports from San Pedro.
It's a first for the Port of Los Angeles. A ship-loading mobile crane for scooping up scrap metal that runs totally on electricity.
Yet another milestone in our collective efforts to promote clean, green technology use at our port complex.
A $6 million crane replaces a 1987 model that ran on diesel power. SA Recycling will use the device to load scrap metal onto ships so the metal can be recycled later in other countries. Shipping them off also prevents having to bury all this scrap metal in landfills. LA County Supervisor Janice Hahn and City Councilmember Joe Buscagino were among the dignitaries at the unveiling.
This is exactly what we need here in our port complex. Doing everything we can to move our goods, but also do so in a green way. And it's investments like this which, every day, get us one step closer to becoming a zero emissions port and keep us the world leader for clean port technology.
The port is shooting for zero carbon emissions for port equipment like cranes by the year 2030. At the Port of Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The crane was acquired in part through a $1 million grant from the Environmental Protection Agency. And landfills could one day be a thing of the past as LA takes yet another step in curbing waste with its newest recycling effort. Anna Marcos takes a look at Recycle LA.
And here it is.
LA's Zero Waste Goals just hit warp speed with this recycling program. Recycle LA will finally provide recycling to 80,000 large commercial and multifamily buildings that either had no recycling or were serviced by private haulers. And to add a little buzz, some advocates are giving the recycling program a bit of a "south of the border" flavor.
We are here to announce the Recicla. And you know why they picked me to speak and to say the Recicla?
Okay, but whether you call it Recicla or Recycle LA, as of July, LA becomes a fully recyclable city. And everyone, single and multifamily dwellers and commercial tenants, will be served by one single clean-fuel recycling operator, which means fewer trucks congesting neighborhoods and clogging the air with emissions and more andolinos recycling.
This program is long, long overdue. Our landfills are too filled up. Our streets are too dirty. Our air is too thick.
Residents at the Deep Green Housing and Community Development are excited to do their part. Recycling is easy, and we can all make a difference.
And it's good because if we recycle, then it will end up in the oceans and kill the fishes and stuff.
The new campaign will put LA well on the road to diverting 90% of its landfill waste by 2025. So get ready to use a lot more of the blue bins.
As we like to say, "Blue is the new green."
Clean and Green is definitely looking to give LA residents and their environment a rosier future. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
LA became the first US city to pilot recycling initiatives back in 1985. We reported on the city's data-driven approach to fight crime and clean up streets, but how about using the same strategy to boost education in the arts? Well, Gil Reyes reports on some creative concepts after crunching the numbers.
You could call it an artwork in progress. City and county governments working together in hopes of bringing the arts to more people. LA County took the lead on this almost two years ago, launching its Cultural Equity and Inclusion Initiative.
Out of that thinking came this idea, "We have all these data sets, and we have so many more that we could take advantage of that we're probably not using to figure out smart strategies to extend arts and culture participation to every resident in the county."
Which leads us to today's Art Data-thon in downtown. Artists, art administrators, and self-proclaimed "data nerds" crunch the numbers and come up with ideas.
We have folks who are experts on different data sets, like data sets about arts nonprofits, data sets about arts education, public art, using social media as data.
Here are some ideas they came up with. Creating an app to connect more people to bookstores via public transit. Also, setting up free little libraries in every metro station. Another proposal is an online system similar to rideshare apps like Uber to help schools find and hire more teaching artists from the area.
The Department of Cultural Affairs and the County Arts Commission are hand-in-hand partnering on this event so that we can start to see how our two systems work together, who's being served by the arts, and perhaps more importantly, who's not.
With the goal of providing arts education to every student in Los Angeles County. In downtown, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
City and county arts officials say children who participate in the arts stay in school longer, get better grades, and are more likely to go to college. Who built America into what it is today? Many will say immigrants. LA city leaders celebrated that in a uniquely LA way during Immigrant Heritage Month. Anna Marcos has more.
Immigrants, with and without sombreros, took center stage here. Councilmembers marked Immigrant Heritage Month at City Hall by honoring one immigrant-owned business in each council district of the city: restaurants, bakeries, supermarkets, a tofu factory, and one family operation with a unique strategy.
Remember, we used to have bowling alleys everywhere. Well, Mr. Leonardo and his family bought those bowling alleys and turned them into ballrooms, nightclubs, and restaurants.
The honorees represented every color in the immigrant rainbow: Ethiopians, Filipinos, Mexicans, Armenians, Thais, Argentinians, and more. They may come from all corners of the world, but their stories all highlight the same hard work ethic that got them the American dream.
He worked his guts out as a laborer and saved money and he sent for his brother, ghettoon, and his children and his niece.
They went from doing it at their home to now having their own bricks and mortar restaurant.
LA councilmembers also passed the city's Justice Fund, voting to put in a $2 million fund to help immigrants who face deportation as a result of recent White House policies.
This is uniquely an immigrant nation, and we are at war today for the future of this nation.
Outside City Hall, another stand in favor of immigration.
LA is a city of immigrants. You're looking at one.
I believe it is our work to protect immigrants and undocumented communities is more important now, more than ever.
These recipients highlight the special contribution of the immigrant experience that helped build the unique tapestry of America. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
While business executives play, and so do presidents. And now, one city department is trying to ensure women aren't left out in the game of golf. Gil Reyes tells us why from Griffith Park.
Regina Benyonas is new to golf, but receives a one-time free lesson on Women's Golf Day, a day to encourage more females to take up the sport. She's learned a lot in the first hour.
Uh, how to swing it. I think, I don't think I would ever know how to swing it if I just did it on my own.
Tregnan Golf Academy in Griffith Park offered the free lesson. Now, I am told by many of these women that the perception is that golf is primarily a boys' club, but opportunities like this one allow them to come out and golf with other women and not feel intimidated.
Women don't necessarily always feel welcome there. They see it as kind of a man's world.
Laura Baurin-Fine, golf manager at the Department of Recreation and Parks, says there are plenty of reasons to take up golf, like low-impact exercise during retirement.
I think women, especially my age, suddenly have some time on their hands and don't have the constraints necessarily of small children. And we'd like to introduce them to a game that they can play with their girlfriends and play with their friends.
And for women still working, like business consultant Angela Babcock, playing opens up networking opportunities and can help seal the deal in business.
It is something that women don't participate in enough. A lot of decisions are made out on golf courses. And if I want to be a part of those decisions, I should probably learn how to at least be involved.
Wrecker Parks is encouraging more people, who are usually shut out of the game, to play.
Especially in underserved communities for kids, and special for women, and especially for women, for people of color. And I think the city has done a great job with just the pricing.
The city has 13 golf courses to choose from. In Griffith Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Information on golf lessons and courses can be found at golf.lacity.org. Well, LA's Fire Department has grown into one of the most modern firefighting institutions in the country, and it's got a roadmap to show how it got here. Anna Marcos takes us on a special tour.
It's a walk down firefighter history lane. You wanted to hose down a fire in the year 1900? Better know how to use a steam engine to pressure the water hoses. Oh, and make sure you feed the horses first.
To see it go down the street to the fire, you've got black smoke coming out. You've got the bell ringing, the sound of the horses. All the, all the sinners from here that are falling through the grate, and they're trailing in the back. So it was really a romantic time of firefighting.
Romantic, maybe, but pretty hazardous. And putting on the first-ever hazmat suit was probably pretty hazardous, too.
That's all, that's all we've got for that. That's, that's a high five.
You're seeing not just a walk back through history at the LA Fire Department's museum in Hollywood, you're seeing it through the eyes of historians. This tour was arranged by former councilmember Tom Labonge and the Los Angeles City Historical Society.
This is a very special building. I was councilman when it became a museum officially. Oh, the equipment is beautiful. It's just absolutely incredible. If you, if you're interested in old vehicles and mechanical things, there's no place any better than this.
I really enjoyed seeing the fire pole, which extends from the second floor to the first floor. The firefighters want to get out in the streets really quickly.
So they come down the pole.
Right.
But the museum centerpiece is probably the firefighter memorial outside, built after three firefighters died in a chopper crash in Griffith Park in 1998. The memorial honors the 267 killed in the line of duty. Each of these statues weighs about 900 pounds, so you are looking at about 5,000 pounds of copper. But that's not the only thing that makes these statues and these faces unique.
We have a person on the hose line who is a male Caucasian. He is being backed up by a woman. The captain is an Asian. The firefighter that's down is a Hispanic gentleman being tended to by an African-American firefighter medic. We wanted to go ahead and make that difference, to go ahead and show that. We encompass everybody.
From the romantic to the diverse, from the old to the new and cutting edge, the LAFD Museum offers a sense of LA's rich firefighting legacy. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The LAFD Museum is located in Hollywood, and it's open on Saturdays from 10 to 4. One of the most historic and picturesque pools in Los Angeles has finally reopened after decades of waiting. Gil Reyes has more from the Hey Rookie Pool in San Pedro. Gil.
Yana Kay, make no mistakes about it. The pool, as you can see, is definitely back after a long and storied history dating back to its original opening during World War II to its closure for more than 20 years and up until recently, the discovery of a secret military tunnel just feet away from here that delayed its opening. But that's all in the past. As you can see, the pool is open for business once again. San Pedro's councilman, Joe Buscagino, takes the first plunge with relatives, friends, and neighbors.
We are so fired up over this. As you can see, the joy, the excitement of bringing this pool back to life, and thanks in part to the port and the city family. This here, this facility was built by city employees here.
Oh my gosh, it's absolutely gorgeous. I love it.
Jan Martin actually swam in the original Hey Rookie Gaffey Street Pool, which opened in 1943 here at Fort MacArthur, a former army post. Eventually, the pool decayed and closed in the 1990s, collecting graffiti some feared for good. Then, a $7 million restoration plan. The pool would have opened sooner, but crews found this, a forgotten military trench under the site. Crews sealed it and added 1,000 feet of access ramp from Gaffey Street to the pool.
So if you are in a wheelchair, you can get to this pool. You don't have to climb any stairs. We are so excited by that, that this is accessible to everyone in the community.
To help prevent drownings, Kaiser Permanente kicked in $400,000 worth of swim lessons to the Department of Wrecker Parks.
Kids mostly get to learn to swim in our programs. This, this pool is gonna offer those very same programs, and hopefully will make a difference in some child's life.
I see the community coming together. I see kids learning. I see kids off the street. What do you think of the pool?
Um, it's really warm and I like it.
The councilman's daughter, Gia, is among those who will use it, and you can, too.
And after you go for a swim, spend some money in our downtown San Pedro area, things are happening here on the Council District 15, and just so blessed to be a part of it.
In San Pedro, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The pool got the name Hey Rookie from a stage show Fort soldiers produced during World War II. The pool will remain open all year long. Councilmember Gil Sadio celebrates another term on the LA City Council. A Crenshaw Health Fair promotes a healthy community, and city officials recognize the contributions of Caribbean immigrants. All these stories in City B. Los Angeles City Councilmember Gilbert Sadio celebrated his inauguration with a night filled with live music and dancing at Plaza de la Raza. The event also marked Council District 1's 30th anniversary with even more dancing and festivities. Community members, along with Sadio's fellow councilmembers, also joined the celebration. Sadio talked about his vision for his district.
I want to go forward to when people felt safe and they didn't have to lock their doors. I want to go forward when people knew that they were gonna work and work in pain. I want to go forward to the time where housing was safe and secure and affordable.
Community members came out recently for a health fair at the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Plaza. A variety of vendors selling fresh fruits and vegetables were on hand, along with health advocates and service providers. One community group called the West Angeles Community Development Corporation is taking part in the mayor's Great Streets Initiative and was also on hand finding out what residents want to see in their neighborhood.
It's a great area here in the Hyde Park area, Crenshaw Corridor. We have an opportunity to shape specifically 54th Street, and we're super, super excited about that. So we're definitely soliciting the input from our community.
The LA City Council recognized and celebrated immigrants from the Caribbean during the city's inaugural Caribbean Heritage Recognition Day, hosted by Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson. Hollywood carnival performers in ornate costumes dance to Caribbean music, and a lunch buffet offered traditional Caribbean fare. Officials say there are nearly 40,000 Caribbean immigrants who live in LA, and this event is one small way the city can recognize their achievements and contributions. With the cost of Little League and equipment, playing baseball can get expensive. But the LA Dodgers are showing kids they don't have to spend a lot of money to enjoy parts of the game. And as Gil Reyes shows us, kids can play almost anywhere.
The kids have arrived at Dodger Stadium, but really don't have to be here to play ball. Ask former Dodger centerfielder Kenny Landreau.
You know, back in our day, we would always find an empty lot somewhere. You get about four or five kids together, man, and play some over the line or play some three, four-man baseball. You know, this is kind of the same scenario, but it looks like they got more kids.
This practice session played entirely with plastic bats and wiffle balls, all part of the Dodgers' Play Ball initiative. It's about getting every kid to enjoy America's favorite pastime, regardless of their income level. Around 80 kids from underserved areas getting a chance to play with Dodgers legends, past and present. The point is that the kids go home knowing that they don't need a huge stadium like this one or even a park to enjoy some of the best aspects of the game.
Throughout the year, we visit schools, and we show kids how they can play with plastic ball and bat and even with balled-up tissue paper, boiled-up foil paper, boiled-up plastic at their schools, on blacktop or grass. It doesn't matter. You can play on the street in the neighborhood where you live. There are so many different ways to play.
In other words, making the most of what you have. In the game of life, it's a winning strategy. Each child also goes home with a free plastic ball and bat. At Dodger Stadium, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Current Dodgers stars Key K. Hernandez and Cody Bellinger also stopped by to say hi. Well, check out our free outdoor summer concert, sink your teeth into some sweet watermelon, and if you love astronomy, it's the perfect time to examine our sky close up. All this and this week's things to do. Check out the sights and sounds of the Dennis Jones Band during No Ho Summer Nights, a free music and film series in the East San Fernando Valley. Bring a blanket, chairs, and gather your friends and family for an evening of stellar performances under the stars. No Ho Summer Nights is being sponsored in part by LA City stars. No Host Summer Nights is being sponsored in part by L.A. City Councilmember Paul Krikorian, the Department of Cultural Affairs, and the Department of Recreation and Parks. The band hits the stage on Saturday, July 29 at North Hollywood Park. For more, visit valleycultural.org. Get ready for your slice of happiness at the California Watermelon Festival. All-day fun includes free watermelon, delicious foods, carnival rides, and attractions, games, contests, live entertainment, a kid's zone, and the newest attraction, Watermelon Skiing. For the first time ever, visitors can step into carved-out watermelon halves and melon ski across a greased canvas to showcase their skills as the crowd cheers them on. Don't miss it, the weekend of July 29 and 30 in Lake Buteras at the Hanson Dam Soccer Complex in the San Fernando Valley. For more, visit watermelonfest.org. Love astronomy? Then head out to Griffith Observatory for its Public Star Party. The Observatory hosts free monthly star parties with volunteers from the Los Angeles Astronomical Society, the Los Angeles Sidewalk Astronomers, and the Planetary Society. It's a chance for the whole family to look at the sun, the moon, visible planets, and other objects, to try out a variety of telescopes, and to talk to knowledgeable amateur astronomers about the sky and their equipment. Check it out on Saturday, July 29, from 2 to 9:45 p.m. For more, visit griffithobservatory.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more
MyLA311 is an easy-to-use mobile phone app, available from the App Store or on Google MyLA311 links Angelenos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city, beautify their community, and stay connected with their local government. Find the nearest fire station, or even Senior Citizen Center. Request graffiti removal. Keep up with what's going on at City Hall. MyLA311 puts the power of City Hall in the palm of your hands.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm a Nyangar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel. Namaste.
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Aristosson, Weezer, Carets, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. I will remind the audience again of the council rules. If you're going to make noises, you're going to be asked to be dismissed out of the chambers if you're going to be disrupting this meeting. So just wanted to remind you of that. Welcome back, everybody, and our first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Rue moves, Mr. Buscayino seconds. Next item, please.
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Ms. Martinez moves, and Ms. Rodriguez seconds. Next item, please.
And, Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
First one standing, so I'm going to ask Councilmember Mitchell Farrell to please lead us into pledge.
Thank you, Mr. President. Right hand on your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Okay, let's go ahead and, if we could, go ahead and run through the agenda.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue the following items. 1D to September 20th, Item 2 to July 25th, 26th, which is tomorrow, Item 3 to August 25th, Item 8 to August 1st, and Item 10 to August 9th.
That'll be the order without objection, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Mr. President?
Oh, Mr. Bonin, yes.
Also wanted to continue Items 7 and 14 for two weeks, please.
Okay, 7 and 14, we'll go ahead and continue those for two weeks. That takes us to August 8th. So that'll be the order without objection. Okay, thank you very much. Next items, please. Oh, Mr. Krikorian.
1E, please, until August 1st.
Okay, 1E until August 1st, that'll be the order. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. President, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that Item 1C be received and filed as the lien has been paid in full.
1C will be received and filed. Okay. Next items, please.
And then Items 1 through 14 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, those are items, and we have cards on all of them?
Yes, but several items have been continued, so there are cards for 1, 4, 5, 6, 9, 11, 12, and 13.
All righty, we'll go ahead and hold those on the desk. Next items, please.
Items 15 through 23 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, we'll go ahead and take those up together unless there are any that wish to call special. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and take those up now. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Item 24 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
We'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That item is now before us, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll.
And excuse me, Mr. President, there is, there are cards on that item.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold that on the desk for cards, then, not a problem. That should take us to public comment.
That is correct, or items called special.
Okay, we'll take up the items for special. Multi-cards first, please. The first one being... Okay, Mr. Previn, come on up. You're, if you're going to applaud, or hiss, or boo, you're going to be asked to leave this meeting. That'll be your fair and final warning for those in the audience. We want to please get through the people's business. Thank you very much. Mr. Previn, you have Items 1A, 1E, you have Items number 4, 5, Items 10, and then you filled out cards for items that public hearing had already been held, and then you have also 24. And then general public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from CD2. And I'll start with Item 24 that I think Bloomingfield plunked on the agenda late for your district, CD12. You and Bloomingfield share some of the Canoga Park, I forget, I think it's called Devonshire, the LAPD out there, and here is an opportunity to give them $100,000 to get a police car. Now, police actions out in that area are under scrutiny, obviously, for a variety of reasons. And so I just, I just ask, is this really the appropriate, is this Sunshine landfill money that's being used on this? I don't know. I think when those guys are being asked to do stuff for political reasons by the city attorney, you have to be very, very careful. I don't know, because it's like, it looks like a little reward, I don't know. The whole thing is a little bit fishy, if I'm being honest, sir. You know, I would ask that you review the policies of illuminating motorists or individuals who are under suspicion, because when you don't do it, it causes a weird energy that Mr. Fuhr is not going to appreciate. I can just be sure of that. And I know you and Mr. Fuhr are very close, so I hope that we can get past this without anybody being indicted. Item number 1 is the lien item, the traditional lien item, and I will say this about that. My one has been continued, 1E, that's Mr. Krikorian pushed it back, but we, I certainly hope we're not starting up the crazy cycle of reducing the public to the size of #Bloomingfield's nose and then denying people the opportunity even speak out about these liens that have been dredged out of the files by Building and Safety. I hope we're not restarting on that note, and I hope that miraculously, all of the public speakers, the recognized speakers, Mr. Aristosson, will be featured the same as we feature the Schwitzy guy or anyone else. Okay, so I think that that's a good idea going forward, and I think that for CD13, where Mr. O'Farrell is holding court, that's Item 6, obviously, and here what we have, correct me if I'm wrong, that still is in the part of the agenda that is, so to speak, hittable. Yeah, this is, this is a vacation of property, and I know O'Farrell's working diligently to make property available to folks, but the excessive contributions from Masiborsky LLCs really do need to be returned. And I know that he knows that, I know that Gene Min knows that in his office, and I know that the entire council knows that under the leadership of Jeffrey Ebenstein of CD5. So I certainly hope that by now, we are going to move forward past the unbelievable blockage on that, that has been, you know, it's almost, it's hard to package up. Item 4, Business Improvement District, getting back to safe territory, but CD, I think the Business Improvement District from Weezer's district has Blair Bestin, and you're squeezing her back in for HHH going forward, which should not be done on a "you may not speak on it" part of the agenda. That would be inappropriate, and that's what you've done. So I, I'm not for that. And now I have just a few seconds, I'm going to regroup and give you the one minute, a general public comment, and here it is. In Studio City, we have a, oh, thank you, sir. Thank you, just one minute, that's all. Yeah, one minute, which is insufficient, but Studio City Rec Center is a place that I know very well. We're facing Prop K upgrade, the voters approved it in 1996, we're excited about it, but what we're not excited about is the expanded scope of the project under the BOE and various RAP and the Parks and Rec. And what they've done is they pushed through an LVNOC, that means Local Voluntary Neighborhood Oversight Committee Meeting, without any outreach. It was a real debacle. Poor Grace Lou was awakened in New York when she found out that the neighborhood council in R.A. didn't send a single thing out. The Studio City Residents Association sort of pretended that they sent something out, so what resulted was nobody showed up. They said, "What do you think?" We all went, huh? All, meaning the three of us who were in the room, and now we are facing fake approval. So the mayor, who is the leader of everything, because all those departments pointing fingers, can only be resolved by someone in the mayor's capacity saying, "We need to have a meeting for the community of Studio City." And so that's what we're looking forward to. And, you know, this is no disrespect to you.
Great, thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Herman. Remind you not to yell on the microphone for our translators as well. So Herman, you're on Items 1, 6, 9, 11, 12, 13, 14, 24, and then general public comment. Please stick to those items, or you'll be, forfeit your time if you don't stick to the items, that'll be your, your warning on that. Thank you.
Hile, in protest of the liens, I declare this a war. We must not be subjected to unfair, illegal process of liens. You already know that multiple people have become homeless due to liens, and it is unconstitutional. Ho, ho, ho. And then I go into Item 24.
Rookie.
Regarding the Los Angeles Police Department denied public access to talk about the process of police development when using cadets to navigate our cars and our systems of crime reduction, but who better than cadets to walk away with police radios and vests?
Mr. President, the speaker's not on the agenda item.
Yes, ma'am, I'm on development.
I'm sorry, excuse me, hold his time. Madam Clerk, I couldn't hear you over that. Oh, I'm sorry, it was the city attorney, yeah.
So in regards to the amenities and trust.
Okay, Mr. Herman, we'll go ahead and put your one minute on for general public comment, because I gave you the warning. Yeah, the city attorney says you weren't on the subject. So please start us one minute for general public comment.
Are you protesting against me, white nigga?
One minute, thank you very much. There you go.
You know Article 1, Section 2, you know what it says? As defining the definition of the Constitution, I'll remind you, fuck you, white nigga Jew.
Okay, if you're going to yell on the microphone, we're going to, please cut his mic and continue your, your time.
I'm a po-po to fuck the young cadets that are 15. There's more mental health there than there is in this facility. Isn't that right, Mr. Bloomingfield, you white Jew motherfucker? Tell the world. And I talk to that Democrat fuck, Mr. what's-his-name-Shure or schmuck dick. Appeal and deny Obamacare. Appeal and deny Obamacare? Well, I need mental health care like the rest of you fucks. So on behalf of public interest, fuck you, Englander.
All right, next speaker, Wayne. Wayne, you're on Items 1E, Item 4, 5, 6, 9, 11, 12, 13, Item 24, and I'd ask, again, I'll ask you, stick to those items, or you'll forfeit your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it. So Item Number 1, what do we say about liens? Fuck you and your liens. CD2 does not need liens. There are many wealthy people in CD2, $1,288. It's no good, we don't want liens in this district. Liens cause people problems to destroy their financial credit. Credit gone by the liens. Liens are the work of the devil, Wall Street's Satan devil. Liens must be eradicated. This is why we don't allow liens in CD5 anymore. So that's why you don't see them, only in CD2. CD2 is ran by a goat, and it's not run by a pig, and I will take CD5's pig over CD2's goat any fucking day of the week. So now, we have the Los Angeles Police Department, a qualified designated terrorist organization, yes, the LAPD, transferring the Sunshine Canyon Community Trust, we're stealing $100,000 to assist funding a fucking car and $50,000 for crime prevention. How do we prevent crime? We prevent crime one fucking way. Move out of LA, that's how you prevent crime. You call 911 in CD12, it does not ring, it does not answer. Call 1-877, ask LAPD. I was put on hold as an animal for 20 fucking minutes while I saw a robbery in progress. Yes, I was in Northridge, I witnessed a robbery.
Mr. President, the speaker's off.
Okay, go ahead and start us one minute for general public comments, since you were off-topic. One minute for general public comment. There you go, Wayne.
So, here you go, violating the Brown Act with no prior warnings. I go to court, you losers, without an attorney. I get gun charges dropped to disturbing the peace and fraction with no fine. You people can't litigate yourselves out of a paper bag with Pike, Bonin's drugs in it, it can't be done. One fucking warning and you cut all of our time out. You're already being sued, Mr. Chair, for Brown Act violations in federal court, they filed a 12B6. I will amend the complaint to add today's meeting to the 12B6. I will go for 56E on summary judgment. Thank you, another $100,000 to add to my $4 million in claims.
All right, thank you very much. I think, I believe that concludes the, oh, we have Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you're on Items 1, A, B, C, and E.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. If you watch me, you know I don't get up here to hear the sound of my own voice, I'm getting up here to tell you.
Stick to the item, please.
What's happening. And this is on the 1A, this is, again, nuisance abatement. You've attempted nuisance abatement on us, and it hasn't worked. Inspection costs, code violations, annual inspections, liens for the following properties, these are liens because they haven't kept up their property. I'd like to go now into my one minute. The number-one thing that has happened in this city in the past three weeks that hasn't been covered is you lost the damn Olympics. Page 9 of the LA Times, you lost the Olympics. Now, if you had gotten the Olympics in 2024, the Olympic Committee Commission from Switzerland would have sent Casey Wasserman $1 billion, would it be $1 billion? Not for you people to spend, but for Casey Wasserman, that's not even his real last name, he changed it. Lou Wasserman was his mother's, his, his mother's father, not his. I'm telling you right now, the LA Times gives you shit for information, information, because all that the city count, all that the Xanahas would like to do is suck the mayor's cock.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh, for your inspiring words. We'll go ahead and, colleagues, we're going to take up all the items with the exception of Item 4, we'll hold that on the desk for speakers in a moment. Please go ahead and open the roll on the balance of the items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Those are approved. Item 4 is now before us. We're going to go ahead and turn it over for Cards, Anne Hickambottom, followed by Daniel Atwater, Martia Sissedo, Robert Buente, Tara Devine, Virginia Wexman. So if I've called your name, please come on up, you can line up if I've called your name, and then when you get up to the microphone, if you could, please state your name for the record, so we know which one you are. Thank you very much.
My name is Anne Hickambottom, I'm with the YW Secret of Los Angeles, here to speak in support of Item 4 for the establishment of the South Park bid. Thank you very much.
That was Martha. They typed your name incorrectly, okay.
It's okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Martha Sausito, I'm with Ann Schutz Entertainment Group. In early 2005, we were instrumental in helping establish the South Park Business Improvement District. They've done a phenomenal job on issues of clean and safety, and we encourage you to renew their, the BID. Thank you.
Tara Devine, Devine Strategies, I am the consultant for the renewal of the South Park BID, and I'm here and available to answer any questions you might have today.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Daniel Tabon of Jade Enterprises. Our company has been investing in South Park for over 10 years, and we're here in support of the extension of the South Park Business Improvement District. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Virginia Wexman. My husband and I moved to South Park four years ago. Since we have been there, we have come to deeply appreciate the benefit the South Park bid has brought to our community. It's reassuring to see the bid's friendly, green-shirted, clean, safe team out and about at all hours, helping us to feel safe even at night. They keep the streets clean, too. When I walk my dog, I know instantly when I have walked past the bid border, because I suddenly see trash all over the street. The South Park would look equally squalid were it not for the bid. The bid team has also fixed some of our broken sidewalks and replaced many street trees. The Hope Street parklet the bid has created has brought a welcome new social space into the community, and the public art projects the group has organized have made the neighborhood much more attractive. The social events the bid sponsors have helped us to get to know local business owners and fellow residents. We have also been able to make contact with city officials at these events.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And final speaker again, Robert Buente, are you here, Robert? No longer here, we'll go ahead and file your, your card then, thank you very much, and we'll note that it's on there. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and, having no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on Item 4, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
That's approved. Yes, Mr. Rue. 16 forthwith, without objection, that'll be the order. Sir, if you have a question, you can go speak to the sergeants at the side of the ropes. If you have a question, you can go speak on the side of the ropes.
Mr. President, Item 4, forthwith, please.
Item 4, forthwith, without objection, that'll be the order for Mr. Weezer. Thank you. Now we have general public comment. General public comment, we have Amber Knight, followed by William Wright.
Good morning, I'm Amber Knight. This is from "When We Were Very Young" by AA Melm. Christopher Robin goes hopity, 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 hop. Whenever I ask him politely to stop it, he says he can't possibly stop. If he stopped hopping, he couldn't go anywhere. Poor little Christopher couldn't go anywhere. That's why he always goes, hopity, 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 hop. I still believe that parking should be free, and I'm running for King of LA. Thank you, and God bless the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your inspirational reading. With that, we'll all, also, we have one more speaker, William Wright. Mr. Wright, good morning.
I'd like to address the whole council, and I hope that there be prosperous. I only have one thing to say. I'd like to see Gercetti, Perry, and Price in private, that's about it. It's concerning bringing forth finances and easing a tax burden. And it's not only for the city of Los Angeles, but other cities and states that's involved in bringing forth finances. It's a transportation project, as well as other things and commodities. Now, business can be here and corporation can, only if they're divided by corporate laws and immigration laws. It has to do with other things like price, not price, and Goodyear and other industries, and Marriott, Martin and Lockheed, that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. That concludes general public comment. And Mr. Weezer, you have a question on Item 1.
Yes, sir. 1B, if we could reconsider and continue it for 30 days, please.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reconsider 1B, we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
It's now before us, and we'll go ahead and continue it for one week, Mr. Weezer. Without objection, that'll be August 1st.
30 days, sir.
30 days, 30 days, that'll be August 23rd.
Okay.
Okay, you got it. So it'll be continued till August 23rd, without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you very much. That clears the desk, we have motions for posting and referral, we'll go ahead and post and refer those. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and, now, colleagues, if I can please, ask for your attention in council chambers, and ask for your focus as we turn the floor over to our council president, Herb Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and, and members. On July 1st was a very special day, but I felt that July 1st was the mayor's day. Members, I believe that today is our day, and Kalen in my office put together a video to kickstart us rolling in to the next session. So if I could direct you to the screen, Kalen, let's see if you did a good job or This council has proven that we shy away from no issue. We have proven that we can fly, we have proven that we can come together and make anything possible.
The nation's second-largest city has voted to increase the minimum wage to $15 by 2020.
Today, we are going to do, as a legislative body, probably the single biggest thing we will ever do.
City leaders have decided bidding on the 2024 Olympics is a risk worth taking.
Councilmember Englander, yes. Making it unanimous, Bloomingfield, aye.
13 ayes.
Never forgetting the values that make us Angelenos, our commitment to justice, equal opportunity, and human rights, and our belief that people can change things for the better.
Well, it was a packed house here at council chambers tonight. The city's newly-formed Immigration Committee basically said they're going to do everything they can to protect all Angelenos.
Los Angeles is and will continue to be a place of refuge.
With the president's relationship with Mexico on shaky ground, the LA City Council takes a different direction, renewing its bond with leaders south of the border.
We are proud to do all the things that we do to welcome people throughout the world, so thank you for visiting us, we appreciate that.
Mr. O'Farrell, one of the hottest topics that's going on today is race and hatred. I'm directing you to get together with the Human Relations Committee and find the appropriate way for the city of Los Angeles to be engaged in this national conversation that's going on.
Well, 25 years after the LA riots, community members of various colors and faiths sat at the dinner table to talk race relations.
You will see that a new ad hoc committee on a comprehensive job plan will be in place. That committee will be chaired by our own Paul Krikorian. It will also have our chair of economic development that led us through the minimum wage current price.
That we need to take one step back and realize that LA is kind of on a roll, and we ought to not miss the fact that things are going really well in Los Angeles right now.
City leaders aim to end homelessness once and for all, and they want to do it with a bond that would bring about a massive housing construction plan.
Is, I guess, enabling legislation that will allow us tomorrow to vote on placing a bond on the ballot.
And I am confident if we put that on the ballot, our partners, the residents of the city of Los Angeles, will pass this and take a major step.
Colleagues, I have been waiting for this moment for four years. I want to introduce Councilwoman-elect Monica Rodriguez.
Well, this is going to be an incredible journey, and I want to thank you, Nuri, for your leadership in also paving the way for so many women.
People will tell us we can't do things. A lot of it will be because they're envious of us, they're jealous of us, they don't want us to succeed. People will criticize everything we do, but a wise man taught me once long ago that in all of his life, he had never seen a statues erected for critic. But to many who they criticize, statues have gone up. Members, let's go out and let's build some damn statues. Members? Members, I again want to thank you for selecting me to be the quarterback of this great team. And I want you to know, to this day, every time I walk into these council chambers and prepare to take my seat around this horseshoe, I have to pinch myself to make sure that it's real. In the entire history of the City of Los Angeles, only a few thousand people have had the honor to sit in these seats, and I want you to know that I am truly humbled by that. A few months back, Mr. Coretts, Mr. Bloomingfield, and Mr. Englander did a presentation before this council. It was related to the Jewish Holocaust, and a very moving presentation it was. But there was a rabbi, and I cannot remember his name, but he said something that haunts me, that stays with me to this day, and members, he stood right up there at that podium, and he looked each and every one of us in the eyes, and he said, "Bad people. Bad people are born into every generation." Now, I had a conversation with our friend Senator Kamala Harris about this subject, and she reminded me that it was Coretta Scott King who said that you don't win your freedom in one battle, you don't win your freedom or your civil rights with one fight, that it's a continuous struggle with lots, a lot of fights, and that every generation has a responsibility to fight for its freedom and its civil rights. Bad people are born into every generation. Now, when I was 12, in fact, I have never told this story before, my sons have never even heard this story, I just told it to my wife last night. When I was 12, growing up in Cleveland, Ohio, one of the joys of my life and my friends' life was on Sunday, we'd scrape together a dollar every Sunday so that we could go to the movies. The movies were cheap. We wanted to go, we hoped maybe we'd get a couple of phone numbers, maybe if we were lucky, we could kiss a girl. On my way to the movies at 12 years old, all of a sudden, I felt something hit my shoulder. It was a strawberry milkshake that had some french fries in it, and as I looked up, there were two grown white men calling me and my friends every name imaginable, telling me to go back to Africa, and using the N-word, the N-word, the N-word. Members, I cannot describe to you how it felt to be a 12-year-old boy, and to recognize that the very sight of you would repulse someone like that. And as I ran away, I'm wondering what to do. I could not tell my mother, because she would no longer allow me to go to the movies. I couldn't tell my father, because he would have gotten in the car with his brothers and drove up and down the boulevard looking for white people to beat up. Members, I was 12 years old, and I looked 10, I wasn't five feet tall, and I know I didn't weigh 80 pounds. So what did I do? I began to hate. My heart hardened, my soul blackened, and I can't even tell you the terrible things that I did for the next several years, because I'm too embarrassed to tell you what I did. Bad people are born into every generation. Now let's fast forward for 50-plus years to another young man born outside of Cleveland, Ohio, an individual who is one of the most recognized athletes in the world. Arguably, the second or third best person to ever play basketball in his life, has led his team to seven straight NBA Finals, won three, has made millions and millions of dollars, has raised and donated millions of dollars to children of all colors throughout the Midwest. And I'm talking about LeBron James of the Cleveland Cavaliers. And he's informed that his home, that I believe is located in Mr. Coretts's district, has been vandalized, and on the wall or on the fence is painted the N-word. And if you watched him as he responded to the press, you could read between the lines and see that he was trying to say, "What the hell is it that I have to do to be considered a man?" Not the N-word, but a man. In the cities of Philadelphia and St. Louis, at Jewish cemeteries, graves were desecrated. Outside of the Smithsonian, a hangman's noose was found hanging from a limb. A neo-Nazi kills two men trying to defend a Muslim girl on a train in Portland. There are bad people born to every generation. And when you listen to the rabbi and you listen to Ms. King, you come to the realization that as long as this world exists, that there must be a constant struggle between good and evil. A few weeks ago, a report comes out that indicates, in the state of California, hate crimes have increased by double digits for the past two years. And the target, the targets of these hate crimes are blacks, Jews, and gay men. If you look at a report where it relates to the City of Los Angeles, Latino-related hate crimes are up 69%. Bad people are born into every generation. Many people, hear me now, many people spent many years and many sacrifices to create an environment that would elect a council that looks like us. Three brothers, two gays, one of which is a quarter Native American, two Latinas, one Italian cop, three Jews, two Latinos, Armenian, and two of the members of this body are immigrants. We owe a tremendous debt to the individuals that made the sacrifices so that the makeup of this council would look the way that it does. We cannot stand by and allow bad people to roll back the clock on the progress that we have made, not just in this city, but in this country. So Mr. Mitch O'Farrell, we created a program in the City of L.A. called Embrace L.A. Mr. O'Farrell, it is time for us to take the training wheels off of the Embrace L.A. program, and we're gonna go citywide. We've got funding, and we're gonna partner with an organization that many of you may have heard of. It is the Community Coalition, which was founded by Congresswoman Karen Bass and headed up by our own Marquise Harris Dawson, and is now led by a young man by the name of Alberta. And their responsibility will be to fight, to bring L.A. together, to make people realize that we are all one race, the human race. Hear me, members. We will have over 100 small dinners going on throughout the City of Los Angeles, all on the same day, all at the same time, Channel 35 scrambling to cover as many of these dinners as they can. They will be on Snapchat and social media, and we will ask our conventional media to help us and cover this. What is more important than us fighting not only to save Los Angeles, but to save the United States of America? That's what we are doing. And you might say, "Well, how does a dinner make a change?" Well, Alberto from the Community Coalition reminded me that some of the biggest changes in this nation and in this world occurred, they were started seated around somebody's dinner table. And we have a responsibility to do everything that we can. Think about this, every generation, every color, every religion, gays, lesbians, straight, rich, poor, and the police, sitting down with the common goal to try to make this city come together. So that is a main agenda that this council will move forward with. Two years ago, Mr. Jose Huizar came to me, and he said, "We ought to start an ad hoc committee on homelessness." Well, we took that ad hoc committee, we turned it into a permanent committee chaired by Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson. In a matter of months, we had the first comprehensive plan to fight homelessness in the history of the City of L.A. I would like to believe that we inspired the County of Los Angeles, because they did the exact same thing. Within a five-month period, we went to the residents of this city twice, and we asked them to give us money so that we could deal with our homeless situation, and the residents of this city said yes, and they decided to reach in their own pocket to put together $1.2 billion to build housing, and over $300 million a year to create services for homelessness. We're gonna follow that same model with our ad hoc on immigration, which we made a standing committee July 1st chaired by Mr. Gilbert Sadio. Look at us around this horseshoe. Los Angeles should be the tip of the spear where it relates to the fight to protect not just immigrants, but all of Los Angeles. Like David Rue said in the clip that I showed you a few minutes ago, "We will be a refuge. We will be here to fight for the people of Los Angeles." And that's what's gonna happen on our Standing Committee on Immigration, where we brought in an expert, not just on immigration law, but civil rights law, a guy named Peter Shea. Now, he is not warm, and he is not fuzzy, but he is good at what he does, and Mr. Sadio will lead the charge in creating a comprehensive law that will protect human rights for every resident of the City of Los Angeles. We have a responsibility to try to do that. We have a responsibility to fight to do that. I've had the pleasure, in fact, I want to say just one other quick thing. My daughter-in-law-to-be, who many of you know, she works in this place, her pastor said that it's not enough anymore to just be non-racist, that each and every one of us have to become anti-racist, and wherever we see racism, we must be there Johnny on the spot to fight it. We have a proven track record in doing things that people do not believe that we can do. I had the pleasure to attend swearing-in ceremonies in the district for many of you. Mr. Joe Buscagino, I was at Mr. Sadio's, I was at Mr. O'Farrell's, I was at Mr. Price's. And you all had a very important agenda that you laid out, but two things were the same in every speech that I heard. The need to bring us together, but also the importance of tackling another important problem in the City of Los Angeles, and that is the creation of affordable housing. So we will create an independent commission where we will partner with the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce and Labor, and put together an independent commission that will work with Mr. Sadio to come up with ways to make building affordable housing affordable. And they're gonna look at all aspects of this, from using shipping containers, to prefabricated homes, to pieces of prefabricated homes, to the time that it takes to get all of your permits here in City Hall. They will work for six to eight months, report to Mr. Sadio, and Mr. Sadio will bring to this body a set of recommendations that I believe on that day we will pass, because we have a moral obligation to do that. And it is hard to believe that in the City of Los Angeles, individuals cannot afford to live in the homes that they grew up in. to live in the homes that they grew up in. So we have to do something to try to address that concern. Another thing, members, we've had a lot of talk, a lot of recommendations, and I think that Los Angeles, I think the people of this city elected us to be bold, creative, and to think outside of the box. I think that they voted for us and put us here because they expect us to take calculated risks. So today, we're introducing a motion that will be directing Mr. Paul Krikorian to revive his jobs committee and look into the feasibility of creating the Los Angeles Municipal Bank. Now, people might think that we're crazy. Trust me, we, this council, we won't be running the bank. But imagine if this is possible, to have a bank where its vision statement is to finance the building of affordable housing. Imagine if we have a bank that is focused on working with small business entrepreneurs to give them loans. And I'll tell you something else. We in Los Angeles, we won't be like a giant ostrich and stick our hand, our heads, in the sand because we recognize that 80% of the people in this city voted for us to regulate, tax, and police the cannabis industry. So, Mr. Krikorian, when you are leading the effort, finding out how feasible it is to create this bank, and what we need from Sacramento to create this bank, also let's look at affording the cannabis industry the opportunity to be customers of this bank. Do you know, I spoke to a reporter a month ago who was with an individual from one of the cannabis outlets, and he went with him when this person paid his taxes. He paid $47,000 in cash. Do you know we've got people that are going to go home tonight and sleep on a mattress that's worth $2 million? That have a million and a half dollars in cash buried in the backyard and a million or $2 buried in the walls? We have to figure out a way to make this industry work. We in government are supposed to push the envelope, not protect the status quo. So, Mr. Krikorian, that is your task. Do it, and I urge you, sir, to please do that quickly. Members, we are fighting, in fact, now I forgot, I looked at Gary Tobin in the chamber. We're putting together a program with the Chamber of Commerce where each and every one of us will identify a business, a small business in our district, and the chamber will mentor, partner them, give them advice, give them resources to help that business grow. If it is successful, we're going to take that program and we will widen it. Now, as I close, we are fighting for more than just the great city of Los Angeles that we love. We are fighting for the United States of America. And, members, the United States of America is more than a bunch of land in several states. The United States of America is an idea. The United States of America is a dream, that whoever you are, wherever you come from, if you work your guts out and catch a break, that you can change your status in life. That's what we're fighting for. And the moment we stop fighting for each other is the moment when we begin to lose our souls. And we have to realize that it takes courage as we fight, and the things that we fight for today will affect the lives of Angelenos for many years to come. When our grandchildren tell stories of us, what will they say? Will they say that we were brave? When the history books remember us, will they say that we did everything within our power to improve the lives of the people we represent? Members, we are not only fighting for our generation's future and our generation's freedom, we are fighting for the many generations to come. And at the end of the day, we have to show courage today to ensure that we can provide a better life for our children and our grandchildren tomorrow. I thank you for this honor that you have bestowed upon me, and I urge each and every one of you to get excited about this agenda that we have before us because we have a lot of work to do. We are LA, we are a big city, we do big stuff, that's who we are, that's how we roll. God bless you. Thank you very much. It is an honor to serve with each and every one of you. Thank you so much. I love you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and go into adjourning motions and see if we have any adjourning motions. I'm going to go ahead and look on my right. Seeing none. Looking to my left. We have Mr. Sadio. So if we can have everybody in chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. Please rise, and as we're rising, I want to remind the city family, the city family of the city family picnic immediately following council as well. Again, that is the city family picnic. So with that, Mr. Sadio, the floor is yours.
Let me acknowledge the incredible presentation made by the president of the council. It was extraordinary and raised quite clearly, succinctly, explicitly the challenges that confront us as leaders, people who have the honor and privilege to serve, people who are elected. I had the honor of serving with one of California's greatest public servants. It is with a very saddened heart that I rise to ask that this body, the city of Los Angeles, close this session, its first session, in honor of David Cogdill. Dave Cogdill was my colleague in Sacramento. He was a member of the state assembly and a member of the state senate. Dave was a moderate and modest man by political evaluation, but he was a giant by the standards of ethics and of leadership and of courage. Dave Cogdill was elected around 2002. I got to meet him early on. He came over to talk to me. Imagine that, me, a liberal Democrat ACLU member, part of the Public Safety Committee. Dave Cogdill brought his bill to me and asked me if I would help him move his bill. We all know the acrimony that exists in this country, the division and divisiveness in our elected bodies throughout the nation, from Washington to Sacramento to local entities. It's embarrassing in many respects, but Dave Cogdill was not deterred by that. He came over and asked to work with me, and we did that. We worked together, as he did with many people throughout his time in the legislature. As you know, I was very interested in a driver's license bill for immigrants, and in many years, almost every year, I placed that bill on the governor's desk. And there are logistics involved in doing that, passing legislation, and Sacramento can be very complicated. And I would rely on David's leadership, even though I knew he was going to vote against the bill, on his leadership in terms of guiding me through the logistics of that process. He was an honorable man. I loved his family, loved his country, and he loved the people of California. Towards the end, when he was a senator and we served in the senate, we had, as we know, each year a crisis while Governor Schwarzenegger was in office, challenges about our budget and our economy. And so at one point, we had to raise taxes to save the state, quite frankly. Every day, members of the state legislature, their families, members of state government, were being paid by vouchers. Bills were not being paid, and in many instances, contracts were going to be terminated. Thousands of people would lose their jobs, thousands of projects were going to be halted, and the state government was on the precipice of falling apart. And so it required us to do something that is, for members of the Republican Party, something that is just completely unacceptable, and that is to vote for taxes. And politically, it's just suicide. It's political suicide if you would vote for taxes. And yet Governor Schwarzenegger put together a budget, working with the leadership, and Dave Cogdill was one of the leaders, putting together a budget that required this vote. And this vote was going to be the measure of who we were. And so Dave took the vote. Dave worked and supported the budget, and late night, his caucus pulled him in with great rancor into a caucus meeting, and he emerged, and they removed him from his leadership position. He gave up his political career. He gave up his political post. He gave up his standing in that community for the greater good of the people of California. He is one of the greatest public servants this state has known because he was a man who acted on behalf of the people of the state of California, not party, not politics, not partisanship, but the people of California. And we lost Dave. He was an extraordinary man. He finished his career as an assessor and then as the head of the California Building Industry Association. He is loved by many. He was awarded the Profiles in Courage Award by the John F. Kennedy Foundation, and he is a man that this state and this nation will sorely miss. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Seeing no other adjourning, oh, yeah, we do have another one. Mr. Coretza.
And first, I'd like to ask that I be added on to the previous motion as well. I served with him.
And Mr. Krikorian.
And he was...
Sure, that's, and Mr. Price.
A notable and courageous individual, and I think everyone that served with him admired him. Also, it's with a heavy heart today that we remember Rabbi Levi Isaac Galperin, who in his 96 years survived the Holocaust, served in the Israeli army, was an opera singer, a cantor, a rabbi, a hospital chaplain, a PhD in music, a husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather. Rabbi Galperin escaped the Holocaust from Romania 74 years ago. He traveled an arduous journey to Israel and eventually to America, where he ultimately settled in Los Angeles. Along this odyssey, he was a refugee who was welcomed in Aleppo, Syria. When the very famous author and Nazi hunter Eli Wiesel died, his memorial included the reading of his very famous book, Night, one of the great Holocaust pieces, and Dr. Galperin was one of the people honored to share in the reading of that book, which was done by Holocaust survivors in memorial. Rabbi Galperin traveled the world, spoke numerous languages, read extensively, loved the arts, loved to collect, and loved the traditions of his faith. He came from a family of distinguished rabbis and was a descendant of his namesake, the legendary 18th century Rabbi Levi Yitzhak of Berdychev, Ukraine. Rabbi Galperin was preceded in death by his beloved wife, Ya'el Hornstein-Galperin. Together, they had two children, author Leora Krygeer and our own city controller, Ron Galperin. And he deserves much of the credit for instilling great values and making Ron the terrific individual and elected official that he is. He will be sorely missed by all who knew him, and we wish him rest in peace.
Thank you. I believe that concludes all the adjourning motions. With that, that's the end of this agenda, and we are concluded. Thank you very much. Be safe.